Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well. There are motions for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 15th, 2019. For a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The October 15th, 2019 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, sixth district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
We have no road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, second district.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to committee on the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number six, seventh district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfers for items seven through 12 be approved as requested.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, second district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number, through item number 17, and that will be the order.
Item number 18, first district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 19, seventh district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 20, first district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will be for, through item 24.
So ordered.
Item number 25.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and the matter be referred to the council as committee of the whole, and that will be the order. Please read any add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and the matter referred to the council as committee of the whole. Same motion for, through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, fourth district.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and the matter be referred to council as committee of the whole.
So ordered.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and the matter referred to the council as committee on the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, third district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number nine, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, third district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered. The county executive is out of town this evening, so he won't be able to join us. He sends his regrets, and I'm sure he'll have much to report to us next week. That said, we'll move on to report to special committees, and Ethics Committee will continue to hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Public forum.
We have 11 speakers this evening.
Very well. Thank you. So when you're called tonight, come forward, give your name and address for the record. As you've heard me say many times, your remarks are limited to three minutes. We'll give you a little grace, but please try to stay within the three minutes, as we have a significant amount of business to conduct tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk, go ahead and proceed.
I am Debra Erp, and while we were doing the Great Streets of Gravois, oh, I'm sorry, Debra Erp, 7933 Arlen-Afton. When we started this Great Streets, I was here at all the meetings, and I listened to, "We're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this." We've only done a part of it, and now things are degrading. Metro buses, we talked about the fact that people were not moving into their apartments, they couldn't get around, and I was guaranteed that we would not, not take the street down to two lanes, we would get the buses running in that area. All of the metro buses have been cut from Afton. Afton no longer has any bus service at all. We have paid a lot of these people, a lot of tax benefits, to build these buildings and run these businesses, and now there's gonna be no bus service. And I do know that there are people that work in those buildings that do not have transportation, they ride the buses. We built a brand-new library on Gravois, against, across from Grant's Farm, there's no, gonna be no bus there. We're moving the police department that was in Afton, out of Afton. It's like we're suddenly taking Afton and saying, "Well, we've, we've put all this tax money into all of these businesses, now we're gonna move all the important stuff out that makes Afton part of Afton. We're gonna build a new police department way down on the other end of Lindbergh where there are police." I'm a little bit confused as to what's going on with Afton, and I would just like a few of you to take the time to look at the plans and see why we no longer are gonna have bus service. People are fighting about the lunch carts that are going in. The amount of money that's being spent on the buildings up there, and they're remaining empty, is a disgrace that we gave. There was a company, Jo-Ann's Fabric, was in the one building, and the man wouldn't even fix the leak in the ceiling, so they had to leave there because they, they were getting their items wet. Great Streets gave him how many thousands of dollars in tax credits? Now the building is fixed, and the buildings are empty. I don't know why we start things and we say we're gonna do this, but we don't take into consideration other things that are gonna happen after it and in the middle of it, like the Loop, like the library. We built the library, the streets weren't good, and the, and the streets were closed down for, how long were the library streets? Closed down for months because we didn't plan things correctly. I didn't realize I was coming on a Loop night, and everybody was against the Loop. I think the Loop is a perfect example of us not planning what's gonna happen when the money runs dry or when they need more money, and I think we need to take better steps in how we're spending our tax money. My opinion, and I just thought I would let you know that Metro is using the Afton streets to get to their properties, but they are not taking any, any people on the route now they say.
Ms. Erp, your time is up. I have to ask you to rock off, please.
Rock, rock, rock. Okay. Walk to Riveteria Express.
Thank you.
Didn't get what I was saying, Mr. Erp. See you later.
Thank you.
Good evening, Erica Williams, 1620 Zerick Drive, Florissant, Missouri, 63031.
Good evening, Ms. Williams.
So I am here to discuss potential funding for the Loop Trolley, and my opinion is that it is not public transportation. People drive to the Loop Trolley for its entertainment value. As far as I know, it does not go to the Delmar Station, which is actual public transportation. Public transportation money can go to North County to incentivize better routes and provide better seating and shelter, if the county so chooses. St. Louis County covers currently 44% of Metro's budget, yet the routes in North County, where I would imagine the majority of riders come from, are too few, and the wait times in between the routes are too long. In addition, like I said, many of the stops lack adequate seating and shelter. The trolley is entertainment. I've seen people drive to trolley stops, park their cars, and then ride the trolley. I urge the council to deny any additional funding to it and to change the trolley's distinction from public transportation to entertainment or something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anna Cashel, I live in St. Anne, Missouri. Last Thursday at 5:00 PM, I took Romeo out for a potty break. He hadn't been out since 8:00 AM and wouldn't have gotten out until the following morning at the earliest. Audit recommendation 70.7, action item. Animal caretakers should check runs every 15 minutes for feces. Activity, SOP updated and staff advised. The shelter has marked this as complete. At the September Advisory Board meeting, I asked what exactly was complete? Was it that the SOP was updated and staff advised, or were animal caretakers checking every, runs every 15 minutes for feces? The response was that the SOP was updated and staff advised. Really? So this action item was marked as complete, when in reality it wasn't being done, misleading. You all seem impressed or hear about how far they are with the audit recommendations. My question is, do you know really what they're implementing and what's really being done? That's why I gave you that specific example. It's extremely concerning to me. The animal shelter is still not prioritizing animal care. Yet the shelter is moving forward on putting restrictions on volunteers such as, "All current volunteers will have to re-interview so they can be properly placed." Seems like a control issue to me that's intent on getting rid of volunteers, who are the lifeblood of the shelter. Last Thursday at 5:00 PM, I took Romeo out for a potty break. He hadn't been out since 8:00 AM and wouldn't have gotten out until the following morning at the earliest without volunteers. And as county leadership, you all think the new ordinance for the advisory board having no oversight of the animal shelter is a good idea. I just couldn't agree, disagree more. The animals and taxpayers of St. Louis County deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cashel.
Next speaker, Warren Weiner.
Good evening, Ms. Weiner. Who are you?
Warren Weiner. I'm glad you're here. I'm loud enough for an echo.
The clerk's gonna move that mic a little bit closer to you, so, thank you.
I'd like to get a little closer, actually. Sorry to be a pain.
No, you're not at all. Go ahead.
I'm here to discuss the county library project to build an office building in Frontenac. A lot of things could be discussed, public safety issues, which have been quite clear in terms of traffic issues, parking issues and so forth, the impact on residential values. Lots of things could be discussed, but what I'm here to talk about is the honesty and transparency of that board in working with Frontenac and others to ultimately come up with the plan that they are now executing. I have been on the Ways and Means Committee of the City of Frontenac since 2005. I was chairman of that committee right up until the fall of last year. So most of the front-end time when the library was doing this planning, presumably and so forth, I was the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, and I can tell you that the Ways and Means Committee was highly focused on that property where those four residential houses are and now the, what had been the Wright School area, because frankly, Frontenac is facing some financial difficulties because sales tax is not going up anymore because people are buying online and whatnot, and so you don't get the sales tax to your city the way you used to with Frontenac Plaza and so forth. So we've had a lot of discussion about that property among ourselves and with the Liddoo School District, who is selling the property there, as to how should that land be used in a way that makes sense for the City of Frontenac and our long-term financial situation so we don't end up with a bankruptcy or something else five or 10 years down the line. So anything to do with the use of that property started at the Ways and Means Committee and then found its way to the Board of Aldermen or the Planning and Zoning Committee or whatever else, depending on our recommendations and our thoughts. And what I want to tell you is that from virtually the last five years, we never heard anything about the library district's plan to take that space. We knew that they were one of the bidders for the Liddoo School property, and they lost that bid, didn't get it. So we were aware of that, but, but beyond that, there was never any discussion about, "Okay, now we're gonna go after these residential properties and pay four times what their estimated value is worth and build an 81,000 square foot office building here and whatnot." And they've said that they worked with us on that. They did not. That's a false statement. We were taken completely by surprise in the spring of this year, when the announcement was made that they had bought those four properties for $6.1 million, even though their value for taxes was $2.2 million. Ridiculous. But nevertheless, so that's going forward now. Anybody who knows that area knows that all the trees have now been removed and looks a lot different than it has for my entire life, but so be it. So my point is just that we're not working with a straightforward, honest group of people in terms of what they're saying to the press and what they're saying to the public. They did not work with us. There's been no back and forth, and as a matter of fact, when our Planning and Zoning Commission said no to their plan, they scheduled a meeting two days later and overrode our decision, which they have a right to do. But did they look into it? Did they ask questions? Did they talk to us about it? Not a bit. They just met and said, "Nope, we're gonna do this thing."
Ms. Weiner, I need you to wrap up, if you don't mind.
I will wrap up. And simply to say, as most of you may know, their board, all their terms have expired. They shouldn't have been there anyway, and we very much want this group and Dr. Page and so forth to replace that board and get a group of new and honest communicators to work through how this all works out.
Very well. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I'd like to address some of the ridiculous statements being made about the situation with the Loop Trolley. The most ridiculous is the claim by the trolley people that having a third car in operation will increase ridership. Joe Edwards is even saying that three cars operating seven days a week could boost ridership to 350,000 a year, so the ridership for the first year will only be about 17,000. A week ago Saturday, it was a picture-perfect afternoon, 65 degrees and sunny, yet I saw one trolley car with only three passengers and a second one with no passengers. A third car would have made no difference. It should also be noted that the only entity liable for the Loop Trolley is the Loop Trolley Transportation Development District, not the City of St. Louis and not St. Louis County. If any funds have to be paid back, and I doubt they would, it is a responsibility of the Loop Trolley TDD. County Executive Sam Page, who is on the Loop Trolley Board, has repeated the assertion that if the Loop Trolley fails, it quote, "could have a wide-ranging impact on future transportation projects." There is no reason to believe that would be the case, especially since the government is to blame as much as anyone for the trolley fiasco. Several years back, after the Loop Trolley was awarded the $25 million grant from the Federal Transit Administration, it caused a local resident to campaign against the grant. The resident thought the trolley was a really bad idea and would be a complete waste of tax money. He wrote letters to the FTA and called transit officials. One federal official finally got exasperated during one conversation and blurted out the truth. With just four words, this official answered every question the resident had and also told why the Loop Trolley got the $25 million grant. The four words were, "The politicians won it." It didn't matter that the Loop Trolley made no sense. It didn't matter if tens of millions of dollars of tax dollars could be wasted. All that mattered was, "The politicians won it." And the politicians got it and created the mess the trolley is in today. As to a federal audit, I don't know what it would reveal that isn't already known. Having been through nearly five years of litigation against the trolley in state and federal courts, resulting in piles of documents, I don't think there is any corruption, but there has been, is a lot of incompetence and unending deception. This council might first look at its own house. It was irresponsible, if not unlawful, for St. Louis County to give $3 million to the trolley a few years ago. What is there to show for the $3 million? What kind of due diligence was done by the council? Councilman Sam Page voted for it. Shouldn't he be held accountable? What about all the other elected officials that enabled the Loop Trolley? There's a saying the former mayor Freeman Bowles Jr. had that I like. He said, quote, "Every tub needs to stand on its own legs." That should be the attitude of this council toward the Loop Trolley. The taxpayers have given enough. Thank you, Mr. Tracus.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Hi, I'm Lynn Labob, from 9701 Irene Place there in Afton. I'm here tonight, I live in unincorporated South County. I believe that we do need representation with the freeholders for all of us in South County areas, because for many time, for a long time, we have not been represented. I appreciate Ernie Tracus. A lot of times I've been able to call him and ask him different things, how come this, you know, this is going on here or there? And he's always been receptive, so I do appreciate that. Also, I, in regards to the trolley, I fought the, in Afton, the not-so-great-street idea. You know, whenever the politicians or anybody wants something, it's, "Great, great, great streets idea." Not such a great street idea. Every idea is not a great idea, so get that. The people don't have the money anymore. You know, all the social justice liberal junk, you want everybody else to pay for it. We don't have it anymore. You've bent us over. So the bottom line is also the politicians with the library. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Weiner, please address your remarks.
Thank you, sir. In regards, yes, sir. In regards to the library, I was appalled that the Grants Library there, that we had to have another library. We could have, kids don't go to libraries anymore, and I think to myself, why, why do we have this board that is allowing this kind of insanity? I call it insanity, where the Frontenac, the Grants Library, there is something wrong when us as homeowners that are the taxpayers are completely left out of the decision-making. Remember, we're in here in America, the Constitution. Remember, it's about us. It's not about you. It is not about you. It's about us, we the people. And we're taking our power back. Leave our libraries alone. You know, the poor gentlemen and these people that have lost their trees, and there's no, I've been to that library several times, and you can't tell me that they could not have torn down that library and built it in the back section. There's, there's something wrong that needs to be investigated in that. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weiner.
Next speaker, Adolphus Pruitt.
Adolphus Pruitt, President, St. Louis NAACP, 4811 Delmar.
Good evening, Ms. Pruitt.
I'm a liberal and I believe in social justice.
It's good to see you.
You can be my friend. Oh, you know, one quick thing, we've been following this issue with Millicent, the 63-year-old lady, and that had the issue with the police officer, and I know the officer's been disciplined and stuff like that. I think it would be extremely helpful. I think the public has no idea of what is the range of discipline. Police are substitute based on things that they do within, within their duty. Now I think it would be very helpful if, maybe a public hearing or something, we really could get a better understanding of what, what that range of discipline is based on their offense, and I think that way maybe some of the, maybe that will help dispel some of the issues from the public, because there was some discipline that may have been appropriate, may not, but nobody knows, because it's employment situation, I understand it, but there's nothing wrong with us having some idea of what the range of discipline is for police officers when they happen to conduct business wrong. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm here to talk about, quickly about the airport and privatization. I had a chance to read this resolution, too, and the one, two, three, four, the fifth word is, really brought some, it's fairly troublesome, because it says that there's no document, meeting minutes, economic impact study, accounting reports, or anything available. And if you go to fly314.com, fly314.com, everything about the airport and what the working group has been doing is posted online. The audits funded that have been conducted about the airport operations, any number of stuff, all the meeting, meeting minutes, not only on the, in their writing, but you can also look at it live, it's recorded. So I just think that, that word is, I just have a problem with it, because it's not quite accurate. There may be some things that are not public, but the majority, if you venture to their website, you spend days going through it, there's a ton of information about the process. I would say this, is that if I was to ask you what civic progress, the Missouri Chamber of Commerce, Missouri Department Economic Development, Missouri Department Transportation, Missouri Partnership, St. Louis, St. Charles County and its partners of progress, St. Louis County, St. Louis County Economic Council, St. Louis Regional Chamber and Growth Association, and the World Trade Center, what all of them had in common as relates to the airport, it would be simple. China hub. China hub. We, this, this regionalism as relates to the airport is not new. China hub. All of those groups came together and they decided they're gonna expand and create this massive foreign trade zone at the airport, and we're gonna have planes flying stuff in from China, and we flying stuff out from China. It's gonna be billions of dollars of impact coming in for the county and its residents. And at the, at the ton of money spent, it was to no avail. And, and now, we got $600 million in debt on the airport, we got about another half billion dollars in repairs that need to be done to upgrade it. We got all sorts of stuff. I mean, if, if the folks who wanna come in, I said, "Bye, yeah. Bring some money to the table, let's address those issues." Otherwise, give us opportunity to see what comes back, see who has some interest, see what sort of pockets they have, and see what they're willing to put on the table, and we just maybe to get some major things accomplished. That's what I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Appreciate it.
Hi. I didn't have anything planned to say. I can only just speak from my heart and my experience that I'm going through, living where I live. My address is, I'm Delora Blackburn, my address is 9249 Orgal Avenue. Now, just had an incident happen in my home, and I've been there for 15 years, and it's been nothing but hell, living there, you know, through my police department. And if I call for a police to come out to service me or help me, the first thing they tell me is, you know, "I can't do anything about that, I can't help you." But what's lead be up to this? There's a lot of corruption going on in my police department, and they really need to be checked out. A lot of harassment, police brutality, you know, and every time, police abuse. And every time I go up there, I'm verbally abused, you know, and I can't take anymore, because on September 22nd, it may be, you know, realize, I have to come out and tell my story of how... to come out and tell my story of how it is living there in Overland. My son did a overdose, September 2nd of this year. And I called 911. I stayed with him and I did CPR on him and took paramedics to ride. And, but a police officer showed up. And it was so strange to me, one police officer. He was a Caucasian guy with white hair. And he never said anything, but I had my door open, so I just said, you know, "Come on in" to anybody that, you know, had came, because I got the door ready for them to just come on in. So, um, um, he just stood there. I'm still doing CPR. He never offered any assistance or anything. He just stood there with this blank look on his face, you know? And I couldn't figure that out either. So, I kept doing CPR on my son, you know? And then, probably about, maybe a minute, two minutes later, the paramedic showed up and I'm still on the phone with 911, you know? I felt relieved that they were showing up. And I told him, "Paramedics is here." But he knocked on the door and he knocked twice. Police officer standing right there. He never even said, you know, walked to the door. And I was still doing CPR. And I shouted, "Come in, come in." You know, "The door is open." And, um, um, he came on in. But the first thing the police did is ran to him and started whispering in his ear. I don't know what the conversation was or anything. But, you know, I'm still doing CPR. And there's the paramedics there. And he's standing there, you know, talking to the police officer. And then, I'm like saying, you know, "They told me on a 911 call, I've hung up now that you were here to relieve me." You know? And he's, as he was walking away from the officer, I heard the officer say that my son was a nuisance. And right then and there, you know, it does something to me. I knew something wasn't right. And I knew my son wasn't going to make it today, that day. And so, the paramedic said, you know, because I told him, you know, "They told me you were going to relieve me from the CPR and you were here to help." You know, so he said, "Oh, let me get that." And he pushed on my son's chest, maybe half a, two little pumps. He stood up, walked around the room. In the meantime, my son's still laying there being unattended. And I couldn't believe that only one paramedic came into the house. And it sounded like it was a botched job to me with the police department and him, you know? But I guess that's when he included him in on it. And I knew when he said my son was a nuisance, I knew what that meant. They were going to let him die, you know? So, I still had hope though. I'm like, I know people are not this cold, you know? Not policemen and the people that we depend on to protect us, you know? And the paramedic's still walking around the room. The police officer told me, "You gotta leave the room now." You know, but I made sure I sit right where I could see him. But the police officer just stood there with me with this, you know, still that blank look, you know, never not saying anything to me. I'm sorry.
That's all right, ma'am.
And, um, um, you know, I still kept looking at my son. And nothing was being done to him. The paramedic was just walking around. And I told, just tried to get this story out and tell everybody that I could about it because I fear for my safety also. And, um, um, at that time, he was still walking around, not attending to my son. Then he went on ahead and he got these big white things. It was just pumping my son. No time did he give my son oxygen or, um, started CPR on him. He had these things on him. And he just stood there, walking around the room as things were just pumping, you know, on my son's chest. And still, nobody showed up, you know? It's just this one paramedic and this one police officer in, in the house and me. And, um, um, so I said, "Well, what about the Narcan?" I asked him about the Narcan, the police about the Narcan when he came in, the Narcan. And he said, "You got to wait until the paramedics get here." And I said, "Well, don't you carry any in your car?" And then, you know, I kept telling the paramedics, "Give them the Narcan," you know? And, and, and by that time, he, like I said, was walking around the room. And then he went and checked my son for a pulse. So, he came back into the room where me and my son, where me and the police officer was, uh, the police officer was standing, I was sitting. But like I was saying, I had a clear view of everything that was going on. So, um, um, then he came in, he told the police officer, "I got a pulse." And at that time, you know, I'm feeling like, well, maybe they're going to give him the Narcan now and save him, you know? So, the police officer just stood there. He didn't answer him. As he, and so he said it again, "I got a pulse." So, at that time, police officers just stared blank at me, you know? And he didn't answer him, so he walked on back in the room. Then he got on his, I guess, the phone. And at that time, he had took the things off my son's chest. My son was there still unattended, nobody doing CPR and nothing, just unattended, just laying there. And, you know, in that, in that time, I could see his feet turning white, you know? And I knew he was dead. But that police officer kept trying to keep me out of the room. So, I went on in there and I touched his feet. And I looked at him, he said, "Ma'am, you can't be in here, you can't be in here." My son was dead by then. But then, here come, the whole crew comes in. And then they start trying to act like they were reviving him. And then I'm still telling the police officer, you know, "Y'all should have gave him the Narcan." You know, especially after he said he had a pulse there. But, you know, then he, they just sit there and, you know, put the oxygen on him then. And I heard him sound like they were chatting or something, you know? I couldn't understand what they were saying. Somebody told me this, tried to summon the youth for rescue. But the police officer thought it was so funny what they were doing. And when I walked on back to the door, even though the police officer kept telling me not to go back to the door, I went anyway, you know? And I see the paramedic standing on my sofa. You know, it was like a circus. It was like being in a horror movie. And I couldn't talk after, you know, that for a while. I didn't let anybody know what had happened, not even my children. And once I was able to talk, because I was like in shock for seeing what I saw, you know? And then the police officer walked over there as a paramedic was standing on my sofa. And he stood by the door and he said, "Oh, the Narcan, you got the Narcan." And then, so he got, the paramedic got off the couch and he said, "Um, um, I don't know." And so, he went and walked out the door. And the police told him, "Get the Narcan." But like I said, I knew my son was dead because his color was changing. And so, he walked out the door. And I see, could see him standing on my porch way, like about a walkway when you come up onto the porch, just standing there. They was starting for time, you know? And then I guess he went, well, whatever, wherever he went. And I knew, like I said, I knew my son was dead by then. And then he come back in, but he's filling with this needle. And it looks like the same, you know, same colors, the same needle that I took out of my son's arm before I started CPR, you know? So, uh, he filling with it. I don't know if anything was in it or what he gave my son or what, but he shot it because the police officer made sure. He asked me, "Where did your son have the needle in? Where'd you take the needle out?" And I, I guess, whatever it was, he shot, he shot it in my son's arm in that same spot, you know? And I was weary about that after I seen everything else I saw, I had seen. And then I could see him getting my son the Narcan then and putting it up his nose. And then, minutes later, he said, "Your son's dead." He couldn't even look me in the face. He was looking down like this, he's dead. And, uh, uh, my medics told me to stop, we already went overtime. You know, you went overtime because you was trying to make sure he was gone, you know? So, you know, I'm living in horror here. And I need some help here. I can't do this by myself. They'll probably wipe me out too, my police department, you know? And if I ever come into something else like this, I got grandchildren, I got family. Supposedly I have to call 911 for myself. I have heart problems. They're going to sit there and let me die too? I don't know. It's just, I can't take it.
Ms. Blackburn, we're sorry for your loss. And we've heard you tonight. Appreciate you taking the time. I've let you go for quite some time.
I know, thank you. Yes. But I wish they wouldn't.
Have you said this was the Overland Police Department?
Yes, sir.
Have you been to the city of Overland and talked to their police chief and their mayor and their fire?
Yeah, I haven't talked to the mayor. I tried to make an appointment with the mayor. And every time something goes down like this, I can never get an appointment with him. This is my first time coming.
I would suggest you go to their city council meeting, the mayor will be there.
Oh, you're talking about there in Overland?
Yes, yes. Have you been to their city council meeting?
No.
That's where I would think you would want to go. Because they control their police department, we do not.
I know.
So, it's Overland Police. So, I would suggest you go to their city council meeting, talk to the mayor. The police chief answers to the mayor. I think that's a good place.
I've talked to the mayor too. I've talked to the mayor too on several occasions. And when I go in there.
About this?
Not about this, because I've been trying to get a meeting with him for this. And I told his secretary what I wanted to meet him for, but she never called me back with an appointment. And they have done this to me before when something was going down, you know?
Well, I just want to say, we're very sorry for your loss. And I do think you'd have some other avenues to, to look at as far as going to the city.
Yeah, but you know, they govern their, their own police department. And I can't get anybody to hear me.
Right.
You know, I'm just going back to the same people and, you know, it's probably all family working there and friends and stuff. And they're going to cover for each other. Nothing's never going to be done about it. And I guess I do have to move out of my house. I got to move away from there.
So, I don't want to interrupt you and I'm so sorry for your loss. I think you're probably in my district. If Marilyn, can you raise your hand over there? If you can get your contact information to Marilyn, we'll put in a call to the mayor to see if they'll return your call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss and, and sorry this happened to you.
Next speaker, Natasha Tru.
Hello, my name is Natasha Tru. And I live in St. Louis County unincorporated, Hazelwood, Floridian District, I'm sorry about this. And I'm coming today to stand before you as the second time that the blood of my family is on St. Louis County's hands. Akila Jackson died at your police department's problem because he played like he didn't remember to cut his lights on. Nobody from this council meeting or the police department has apologized. Even came to the candlelight that happened a few days ago. Nobody said nothing. My nephew Lamar died in March with the blood also on y'all hands. Y'all have money for everything else but to hire the proper people. Y'all got $200,000 for entertainment. That's not Metro, we can't catch that bus to work. So, that's not nothing but a game for rich people. Because it ain't for us, it's for y'all. As they say to politicians, it's what's count. It's what's lining what y'all want, not what the community want. Now, we got police officers that is rogue. We got correctionals office that's rogue. Everybody's standing up here with their hands tied. We can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do this. But we steady pay y'all for what y'all cannot do. When are we going to get some justice for us on this side of the community? Not the justice that y'all are seeking for all these little projects that y'all are just playing with. We need projects that actually benefit these communities. We need you to hire proper people with the money that y'all are just frivolously spending. Y'all are not hiring anybody that's of substance. We got an audit that's not been done at the jail, but you got $200,000. We haven't found out why my nephew died and what can we do better at the jail? Y'all took away fees for medical, but fees. What else can we do better? Are we going to hire better people? Or are we going to make people accountable? Or are we going to make y'all accountable? Nobody's accountable. Everybody's standing up there, "Well, you know, I actually can't do anything. I just hold this position." Well, if y'all just holding positions, let me hold one for free. I could stand up there and look stashed face too and, you know, nod my head to agreement of what I want to vote for. We need some different votes on some different things. We need y'all to stop wasting our money and wasting our time because that's what you're doing. That's it. Y'all got $100,000 jobs, everybody got assistance over here. How many more assistants do you got? I'm just saying, all this working, all this paying, we ain't getting no justice and no peace. Now, my cousin has to let go his daughter. And he's struggling with that. But she's God. But he's still got to hold on for what? And ain't nobody said, "We're sorry." Police department said it was her fault. As y'all said, it was my nephew's fault because he was locked up. And that's her fault because she was in the street, crossing the street like a normal person. Everything is always our fault. When are y'all going to be accountable and make it y'all fault?
Thank you, Ms. Tru.
Next speaker, Angie Zorich.
Hello, Angie Zorich, Oakville, Missouri. I appreciate you stepping up and trying to help this woman. I know that St. Louis County is a, covers a lot of area and all these municipalities just complicates things. Every time we do have a problem, don't we always step in and step up and investigate police officers like the, I mean, aren't we investigating the shooting at the Galleria where a Shrewsbury police officer shot a boy, a young man? You know, it's all the same community. And I think we all need to step up and stand up for each other. We don't have police accountability. Overland doesn't have police accountability. It, it's just a trend. It's just the way things are. And it's been like that for a long time. And, and I think that's why we come here because I, I don't even know what justice is, but I, it, it's not fair. Her son was a nuisance, so let's watch him die? Let's, let's just make her stand in the next room and watch him die? That's not, that, that's, that's, that's cruel. And, and we have too many police officers who have no compassion. We need, you guys know this, we need better training. We need a lot of things, but we really need oversight and we don't have it. And I hope Sam Page is watching this at some point because he is responsible for appointing people to all of these boards. And it's a big job. There's lots of boards, everybody's got expired terms, and nobody's really doing their job. And especially, you know, I know, you know, you guys, this trolley business, all these outside things. And I know that how we spend money is important to the community, but these are life-or-death situations. And, and it's really important that we have oversight. That's the biggest thing that I can say to you. And I know I've been saying it for a long time, but we don't have it and that's what we need. Thanks.
Next speaker, Arnie Deanhoff.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, county and state public advocate. And you know my heart breaks tonight. Seems like St. Louis County, we hear about tragedy after tragedy after tragedy. But I don't see any elected official or appointed official, or the county executive, or any police officer show up to say that they're sorry and to show their concern. We do when a police officer falls or is injured, but we don't treat civilians that way, and that's a shame, especially for the 12-year-old girl, Kiki. I want to start out by saying, "Thank you, Mr. Trakus, for having compassion and having a heart." I didn't know that you had a heart until tonight. And I'd like to thank you for showing your compassion to this young lady behind me because she lost her son. Now, at the committee, the whole meeting, I said to you, Mr. Trakus, I can't hear because people are talking low. There was a loud air conditioner handler HVAC system. And I don't like when government hides in a conference room and lowers their voice so the public can't hear. There needs to be, there was no microphone system. We have Americans with Disabilities Act, known as ADA. Acting County Clerk Valente, I asked you to look into a microphone system and an amplifying system to make sure that every resident has access to hear what our elected officials are saying. I also want to make note that we don't see any showing of Chief John Belmar. He's again absent from hearing the concerns of the public. And that's And that's of a severe concern, which I also addressed with the County Police Board of Police Commissioners. Kiki Jackson, 12 years old, fighting for her life. The police officer had an onboard camera, was not activated, was doing 59 miles per hour in a 30 mile an hour zone in St. Louis City. No lights, no overhead lights, no warning sirens. There was vigil held last night, and I saw none of you there. And I saw none of our police officers in brown at that vigil. That's really sad. I've been asking for internal affairs complaints and still haven't heard from internal affairs after testifying before the Board of Police Commissioners. There's two police officers to my right and to my left who have violated the law, and I have internal affairs complaint, but nobody cares to hear from them. Next, I'd like to talk about the Trolley Loop Project. It's a waste of federal transportation, state and county highway taxes. 11.1% in sales taxes at this area. Uncle Joe should reach into his rich deep pocket. Uncle Joe should write the check if you truly believe in this project. This trolley was the mostly sole purpose of bringing people in foot traffic for Joe Edwards and nothing else. I ask that you not spend one more dime, but spend it in making our police officers accountable and responsible. Now, I sat in court, and I did see Chief Belmar just an hour, just two hours ago in Division 10, where I saw an officer that is charged with racketeering and was suspended by the police department a few years ago, where he told that the FBI was after the cousin of former Mayor Slay in the city of St. Louis, who is a convicted bookie. And he let him know that there was a undercover operation.
Mr. Deanhoff, I need you to wrap up a few lines.
I will, sir. Thank you. And I have some problems with what I heard over in the courts, especially with the promotion of people to lieutenant when they were suspended for unheard of in criminal activity. But we keep promoting people over and over and over. And finally, I'd like to talk about continued harassment and hate from Judge Michael Burton, Division 16, who brings harm, brings no charges against me, violated numerous court rules on my civil rights. Final trip to next county council meeting on Tuesday, you'll know I'll be across the street in the county correction facility. I hope to get a visit from Sam Page to see how it's like to experience the awful conditions in our corrections jail. And urging Trakus, I even hopefully see you over at the county jail. Hopefully you'll come give me a visit. If the judge decides me, put me in county jail without any charges and over legal fees, which I don't know.
Mr. Deanhoff, I really need you to wrap up.
There's zero concern for people from elected officials, in my opinion, and I think it needs to change. You need to start concerning about the 1 million people that you serve, all individually. I appreciate you hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Deanhoff.
Hopefully I'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you.
This concludes public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 292, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $500,000 from the United States Department of Justice, appropriating the same for support of the St. Louis County Adult Drug Court and the Veterans Court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 293, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept an additional grant of up to $61,948 from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, appropriating the same for support of expansion of leased space for the public, for the police department, and authorizing execution of related documents. Bill number 294, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. An ordinance amending the general plan of St. Louis County by adopting and incorporating the Spanish Lake Fountain Corridor Retail Study and Redevelopment Strategies Plan. Bill number 296, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the National Committee for Equality Assurance for participation in the Patient-Centered Medical Home Recognition Program. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all of this.
Thank you. Proceed with introduction of bills, please. I'm sorry, perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20. Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 284, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray. An ordinance amending Chapter 502, Title V, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, levy and collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Sections 502.460 and 502.470, and by adding and enacting a new Section 502.472 pertaining respectively to the Housing Resources Commission and establishment of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I'd like to move for adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 284.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries substitute bill number 1 for bill number 284 is adopted.
And then I will hold for perfection. We will be having a hearing. The plan right now is to have a hearing about this bill at 3:00 PM next Tuesday.
So that, so ordered.
Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 286. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 286 is perfected.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 287. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 286 is perfected.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 287. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 286 is perfected.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 287. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 287 is perfected.
Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember Daze for Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for perfection of bill number 288.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 288 is perfected.
Bill number 289, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 289.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill 289 is perfected.
Bill number 290, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 290. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill 290 is perfected.
Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect bill number 291. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 291 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to, for final passage of bill number 277.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 277, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 277 is finally passed.
Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 280.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 280, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 280 is finally passed.
Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of bill number 282. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 282, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 282 is finally passed.
Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of bill number 283. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 283, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 283 is finally passed.
Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of bill number 285. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 285, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 285 is finally passed. Resolutions?
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have one resolution this evening.
Mr. Chair, if you could direct the clerk to read resolution number 1.
Sir.
Go ahead.
Resolution number 1, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Resolution. Whereas the Loop Trolley Project was intended to link the western end of the Delmar Loop commercial area in University City with the Missouri History Museum by having trolleys transport passengers between the two ends along a 2.2 mile route. And whereas around 52 million in public and private resources have been expended on the Loop Trolley Project, including approximately 33.9 million in funding from the federal government and approximately 3 million in funding from St. Louis County in 2015, as well as tax credits and tips from St. Louis City and St. Louis County, with only 75,000 coming from private funding sources. And whereas the Loop Trolley was originally supposed to begin operating in fall 2012, but was repeatedly plagued by missed deadlines, cost overruns, overly optimistic ridership projections, and geographic challenges, and did not actually begin service until fall 2018. And even then, only with a reduced schedule and on a track that was shorter than originally intended. And whereas, a 2017 request from the Loop Trolley Company to St. Louis County for an additional $500,000 to avoid insolvency was never seriously considered by the county, and ultimately, private funding was provided by the Clayco Foundation. And whereas, in a communication to the St. Louis County Council that was received and filed by the council on October 15, 2019, the county executive stated that the Loop Trolley Company has requested an additional 700,000 in funding from St. Louis County, and that the company has warned that it faces insolvency without the additional funding. And whereas, it would be appropriate to subject the Loop Trolley Project to a federal audit, given that it yet again finds itself in an unsustainable financial position, despite the significant public resources and taxpayer dollars that have been expended on it. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Louis County Council hereby calls on Senators Blunt and Hawley, Congresswoman Wagner, and Congressman Clay to formally request that the U.S. Department of Transportation conduct an audit of the Urban Circulator Grant awarded to the Loop Trolley Company to determine exactly how that public grant funding has been spent. Section 2, the Acting Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the Washington, DC offices of Senator Roy Blunt, Senator Josh Hawley, Congresswoman Ann Wagner, and Congressman William Lacy Clay Jr., and to Federal Transit Regional Administrator for Region 7, Moki Ahmad.
I move for passage of resolution 1. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution 1, there are seven ayes.
Very well, resolution number 1 is adopted. Before you go any further, Madam Clerk, I had a resolution on the agenda tonight regarding airport privatization. You all heard Adolphus Pruitt, who I know is a truthful man. I'm going to take the opportunity to determine whether or not the website that he mentioned does in fact include the information he outlined. So we're going to hold my resolution on the order of business with respect to that in order to give us an opportunity to visit this website and determine if in fact minutes and other documents have been made available. So with that, that'll be the order on that resolution number 2.
Yes, sir. Moving on to unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number 2, 4th District.
Received, filed, and the council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 3.
On this one, we're going to proceed with votes on the appointees individually. So with that, we'll proceed first with the appointment of Ms. Katie Foran. Is there a motion? The motion be, appointment of Ms. Foran be approved is recommended?
So move.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Ms. Foran, the motion carries and Ms. Foran is confirmed. Proceed with the appointment of Mr. Alex Garza.
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh. I make a motion to appoint Mr. Alex Garza to the Board of Freeholders. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the appointment of Dr. Alex Garza, there are four ayes and three noes.
Very well, the motion carries and Mr. Garza is confirmed. With respect to the appointment of Ms. Dee Joyner, Ms. Joyner has not been able to appear before the committee of the whole because she's out of the country. So we have her scheduled for next week. So we'll hold that on the order of business to have an opportunity to meet with Ms. Joyner. Brings us to the appointment of Mr. Mark Montevani. Need a motion.
So move. Second.
On the appointment of Mr. Mark Montevani, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the appointment of Mark Montevani, there are four ayes and three noes.
Very well, the motion carries and Mr. Montevani is confirmed. Next is Mr. John Nations. The emotion there. So loop. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the appointment of Mr. John Nations to the Board of Freeholders?
Aye.
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 No.
No.
Aye.
Want to do roll call? Oh, yeah, just do a roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Before I give my vote, I just, I have something to say. One of the factors by which I judge a leader is in his or her self-awareness, an ability to recognize mistakes that they make, and an ability to admit them and learn from them and grow as a person and a leader. Last week, I gave Mr. Nations a number of opportunities to accept any responsibility for the state of bi-state development. And in all of those instances, he passed the buck onto someone else. That is not the leader that I see a fit in a project of this magnitude, and therefore, I vote no.
Councilmember Fitch?
I feel the exact same way as Councilwoman Dunaway. No.
Councilmember Gray?
Unfortunately, I missed the meeting where we were able to talk to these people. Some of them I already know, though, thank goodness. John Nations, the ambivalent feelings toward placing him on the board. I will go ahead and vote. Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Before I vote, I'm going to say my piece. I've worked with John Nations for three years almost, as long as I've been here, through some pretty tumultuous times regarding
some pretty tumultuous times regarding the previous county executives' attempt to control by-state. Mr. Nations was steadfast in his resistance to that, and many of by-states' problems are attributable to that as opposed to any type of mismanagement. I've known him to be pretty straightforward with respect to his representations, so I manifestly differ with Councilwoman Fitch and Councilwoman Dunaway, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the appointment of John Nations, there are five ayes and two noes.
Very well, the motion carries and Mr. Nations is confirmed. The next is Ms. Cheryl Milton-Roberts. Need a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Cheryl Milton-Roberts to the Board of Freeholders.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries and Ms. Cheryl Milton-Roberts is confirmed. Next, Mr. Fred Cersey.
I move to appoint Mr. Fred Cersey.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Cersey is confirmed. Next would be Ms. Carol Stroker.
I make a motion, make a motion to appoint Ms. Carol Stroker to the Board of Freeholders. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the appointment of Carol Stroker, there are five ayes and two noes.
Very well, the motion carries and Ms. Stroker is confirmed. Finally, Mr. James Wilson.
Jason Wilson.
I'm sorry, Jason Wilson.
I make a motion to appoint Jason Wilson to the Board of Freeholders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on the appointment of Jason Wilson, there are four ayes and three noes.
Very well, Mr. Wilson is, the motion carries and Mr. Wilson is confirmed, and this means that all but Ms.
Joyner.
Joyner have been approved for the Constitution. And as I said, we'll take up Ms. Joyner next week. Move item number four.
Excuse me, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Take your time.
Item number four.
All right, item number four, we'll hold on the order of business, same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
On the new business this evening, I believe we have two prepared orders. Or do we have three? Do we have three? Three prepared orders? Okay.
I move for the adoption of order number one. I would like to say there are several things in the description that I didn't particularly agree with, and I went ahead and supported the Presiding Chair's recommendations, and I think that my minor, to me, is minor. Change is a compromise, and with that, because I, one of the biggest issues I had was with the full-time position, and I went ahead and kept that in, but I don't think we should prevent people from, if they need, you know, additional funds, there's no, I don't know anyone else in our department that had that requirement. So with that, I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second.
Any further discussion or debate? Okay. So that being the case, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We were given another order three. Can we discuss this? Because I think they're the main. Well, I think right now all we have is order number one before us. Is that right?
That's correct.
So we'll discuss three when we get there, I suppose.
But, okay, now I'm confused. Is this pertaining to that?
Order number three is for the budget coordinator.
Yes.
Oh, okay, and this is for Legislative Researcher?
So this should be a separate order if you want to change this.
It is.
My understanding is it is a separate order. Just, we just got this like five minutes ago. Correct. No, I'm not disputing that. But we can discuss that when we have it.
Because I think they're both linked.
Any more discussion or debate regarding order number one before we vote? Well, I'm going to say something. Jobs with the council are important, and I'm concerned with the idea that someone could be hired and yet free to engage in simultaneous full-time employment in another endeavor. I believe that the change in the description opens that door wide and will present the opportunity for this body to not have the advantage of a full-time employee as envisioned by the original job description. So with that, I think if there's no other debate or dialogue, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
I do have a question, actually. Is that explicitly prohibited in any other role on the council?
In the office?
In the office?
I don't know if there's any other job descriptions other than the two.
This is the only, these two are the only, only roles within the council staff that have a job description.
I believe that's correct. I don't know for sure, but I believe that's correct.
What about the auditor?
Well, I'm not considering him a staff person, actually. A little bit more of a substantive position, and plus, he's independent, so.
And my feeling is, once you put something in writing, you can't do anything about it. So this at least gives the person the opportunity, so they, if they so need to, not necessarily just because you choose to, you may need to get a second job, you have the opportunity. We, as a council, can hire and terminate whomever we want to, so if the person comes before us and is in this, in this description, and we decide we don't want to hire someone who has a full-time position, that's also our decision to make. And if they get a job after they're hired, we can terminate them. But if we don't change it, there's no, nothing, that person cannot get a job, just period.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on paired order number one, there are five ayes and two noes.
Very well, motion carries, order number one is adopted.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second.